We're gonna start this meeting after prayer. We're gonna ask Councilman, uh, Councilman Merritt, will you give our prayer, as well as Ms. Patricia Lane, to come and give us our pledge of allegiance. Will you all please stand?
Okay, Mayor, before, before we do that, I would like, you know, Melanie, Melanie Hutchinson lost tomorrow, and ask that we do something for her.
Let us look to the Lord. Gracious God, our Father, Lord, we come this morning, this afternoon, telling you thank you, that you ta- you bought us, you took us, and you bringing us, Lord. Thank you for walking with us, talking with us, and keeping us, Lord. Praying for our city, that you heal our city. Stretch out your healing hand over this city. Lord, let your Spirit rest, rule, and abide in this meeting, that we come together for the betterment of West Memphis. Continue to cover, keep our mayor, our council, our first responders, Lord. Touch them, cover, keep them, Lord. And we want to thank you again for all that you've done for West Memphis, for all that you've done for us. And we just love you, we praise you, and we thank you. Now, in the name of Jesus, we pray and ask it all. Amen.
Well, you all remain standing, but before we do the pledge, I'm gonna ask for a moment of silence for Ms. Hutchinson, and any one in the city that may have lost a loved one. Thank you.
Do you wanna face the flag?
Put the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the Republic of which is stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Ms. City Clerk, will you please call the row?
President. Senator Stevenson.
Here.
Senator Sooner.
Pastor Bruce.
Here.
Pastor Cat.
Here.
Councilman Crum.
Here.
Councilman Harris. Councilman Hope.
Here.
Councilman Hutchinson. Councilman Mohammed. Councilman Monday.
Here.
Councilman Mary.
Here.
Councilman Davis.
Here.
Seven. We got seven out of ten that's present. Uh, we got bid openings to Westme- utility tree trimming bids. If you all have saw them, can you make an emotion and secondly refer back to utilities department?
Mayor, if I may, um, that was Mrs. Lane, and made sure everybody had a copy, so you'd know exactly where the tree trimming was going to be done. This is in the northeast quadrant of the city. Uh, last year, they did the southeast and southern part. And then, of course, you have a migraine of what most likely will happen next year or shortly thereafter, which is the northwest.
So that's your thirty mile and your twenty-one mile?
Yes, sir. We're doing the twenty-one mile.
Doing the twenty-one mile?
Yes, sir. That was already in their budget, and they felt comfortable with it.
Okay.
Mayor, make a motion. We approve and refer back to administration.
Still moving. Snacking.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? Approve the bid openings. They go back to utilities department. Were there any corrections to the minutes, please?
Yes, Mayor, I need to correct my mistake from our last meeting. R1, instead of thirty-five thousand nine twenty-one ninety-eight, should state four million seven hundred sixty-three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars ninety-one cents. And under R2, the amount of four hundred seventy-three thousand eight hundred eleven dollars ninety-one cents should have stated thirty-five thousand nine twenty-one ninety-eight. I had them mixed up, and I apologize.
Will you put that amendment in the motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes.
What they doing here, he making amendment to the minutes. So he just made, second, you gonna second that?
I was gonna make it all at one time. Just get it over with.
You got to amend it first.
You got to amend it. You gotta amend it. Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? It's amended. Now, Councilman Crum.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes presented by Councilor Cat.
As amended.
As amended.
All right.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose? The minutes are approved. Uh, we had no old business, we had new business. Uh, Councilman Cat, will you make that motion on R1, R2, and O1?
Yes, Mayor, I make the motion that read R1, R2, and O1 by title only.
Second.
All in favor, aye? Oppose?
R1 is a resolution for the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to participate in the Engaged Cities Network Declaration of Service program, and for other purposes.
Here in there, can I get a motion and a second to approve?
So moved.
Second.
In the discussion. Here and now, all in favor, aye? Oppose? And pass it. Will you give R1 a number, Ms. Clerk?
Resolution number? Resolution number twenty-two eighty-three.
That number is twenty-two eighty-three. R2?
R2 is a resolution authorizing the offering of bonds by the city of West Memphis, Arkansas, to finance park and recreational facilities and improvements, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Can I get a motion and second to approve?
Make a motion with it.
Second.
In the discussion. Just for the public record, this is Tilden Rogers Park. You know, we been getting a lot of comment about when we gonna start with Tilden Rogers Park. So this is the beginning of getting that together. So, uh, can I get, um, all in favor, aye? Oppose? It passes. We get R2 a number?
Resolution number twenty-two eighty-four.
That number is twenty-two eighty-four. Senator O1?
O1 is an ordinance granting a special use permit for the property located at five fourteen South Fourth, permitting a vehicle repair shop in a I-1C light industrial core zoning district.
Haven't they read for the first time? Councilman Crum?
No, I was just gonna make a comment, and, uh, that, uh, this is the same lot that the wrecker service was trying to get a hold of, and, uh, it's on first reading, so we got some time to look it out and study over it.
Yes, sir. All right, permission request. Permission to accept the police department policies and positions on the body cameras. Um, is that what you turn? Well, I think what the council want to do is look it over.
Well, if, if, with Mayor's permission, uh, we have a, uh, a special council meeting early next week, because we have a July first deadline with this.
Okay.
And give everybody an opportunity to read through it, ask any questions to the department. Uh, Monday, Tuesday, whatever works best for the council.
Okay.
So we can keep things moving along.
Agreed.
So what your, your, um, goal, just to table it to the special call?
Which you will announce.
Okay. All right. Yeah, this is the, uh, the, for the body cameras, that's gonna start July first. This is the policies that they're gonna have on it. And what the council want to do is, yeah, that's what we be doing. We, we just table it and have a special police commission before the first, so you all can look at it, and then what you all, yes, ma'am? Yes, ma'am?
We didn't know if it was possible, if we could just have a joint meeting with commission and entire council, we can just take care of it all at one time? You the chairperson, let us know.
All right. I read the council gonna get together first next week. We'll pick a day. And, but the, this, the body cameras, like I said, uh, don't go into effect until July first. But there's something definitely we need, there's something we've been working on for a long time. So, and to get passed before it go live, so.
Yes.
We get that done.
I do have, uh, something scheduled for four o'clock Tuesday next week, so we need to keep that in mind.
Sure. Uh, I guess we'll pick a time and date for everyone. Won't be the twenty-ninth. It won't be at four o'clock on Tuesday, so we'll get the date. And in fact, I'm gonna advise you all over this weekend, read it up and down. If you got any questions, mark it, and we can get in, get here and do it quickly. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, I would like to do it Monday, Tuesday, whatever. If everyone go up at the weekend, then it really won't take too much.
Just don't do it at four o'clock Tuesday.
All right. That'd be cool, but you know, you can't drag it out too either. So, just playing. So, second, I have a permission request to purchase two twenty-twenty-three-dollar Charger Pursuit Sedans V8, uh, item number four six zero 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 five one six two two, from the twenty-twenty-three Arkansas State Vehicle Contract?
Mayor, if I, as a member of the Budget Committee, I, I thought there was a procedure where each department had to bring these items before their commission. That commission would make a decision either way, refer that to the Budget Committee, Budget Committee then refer it back to the entire council. And lately, it seems like we kinda just rushed some things through, and I know it's necessary, I'm first to agree. But since we're gonna be having a meeting next week, can we just go ahead and let the commission have the respect of being presented that, and then we can just keep moving it forward?
That, that's fine. I do wanna add, too, these cars would be paid for out of seizure money, so it won't be the, your bu- the budget money. So it's coming from seizure, but I have no problem with that. It wouldn't make a, uh, difference when, okay, she said would not make a difference, so what we'll do, I'm, I'm just saying Tuesday at twelve. Tuesday at twelve.
Tuesday at twelve, that's fine.
Fine with me. Ms. Merritt?
Yes.
Councilman Wheeler, Dr. Bruce?
Yes, sir.
I'm good.
Councilman Cat?
I'm.
Councilman Mohammed, all the way down. Tuesday at twelve, good? Councilman Monday? All right, Tuesday at twelve, we'll go through both of these items and, and actually report. Also, what we'll do, we'll call a special council meeting after that, if that's fine, just to prove these.
You go ahead and ask.
So, I'm letting the press know Tuesday at one, or twelve, no, twelve-thirty, twelve-thirty. Because, we gonna say one, because I know the council gonna look over these, these items over the weekend, so it won't be nothing long. And Tuesday at one, we'll go ahead and approve it and get everything taken care of. So let them press know now.
Mayor, I did have a question to ask Councilor Cat, because he's in the Budget Commission for, and he explained what you just said, that this, these are being paid for through a different fund. Uh, but they're gonna require two drivers. Um, is that gonna free up two SUVs that could be used for spares, or?
Um.
Do we have people waiting in line to drive a?
I, I, I'm, I'm not sure how the police department gonna use it, but one of the things I did found out, that I talked with them this morning, and they explained to me that they can only have two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand in that account at one time. So they have to get the vehicles and use that. So whoever the chief decides who gonna use them, then that would be under his discretion. Committee reports. Fire?
Fire met, uh, this week, yes, sir.
Okay.
Public Works, Utility. I know you don't hear me talk that much, but unfortunately, I got first.
That work, go ahead.
Uh, Public Works met on June sixth. Um, under the fleet report, there were two front-end loaders, two were operational, two were down. Uh, the rear-end loaders, three were operational, one down. One armed bandits, both were operational. Graffle trucks, three were operational, two were down. Uh, mostly that was due to drivers and vacations and sick and everything else. They had a little shortage, but I'm sure all that's gotten taken care of by now. Under the recycle program, they picked up eleven thousand four hundred sixty pounds and picked up, or a thousand tires. Under the code enforcement, they issued citations, yard citations, to three-hundred-plus, uh, individuals. They towed a little over ten cars. Uh, there were thirty demos. They are presently involved with three court cases. And on the yard citations, half of those were vacant lots. So, that concludes Public Works. Fire Commission met on June twentieth. Uh, there are two positions available for firefighters that they believe they already have filled. They're just waiting for them to go through their physicals and, uh, drug test. And we have one vacancy with the paramedics that's still open. There are no retirements. Uh, PPEs will be here probably in October. Vehicle maintenance, engine six is placed out of service now, for once in good. It's a, a twenty-year-old vehicle, and it just is no longer functional. Uh, they're in the process of getting, uh, bids written, specs written, for a new platform truck, and hopefully they'll be able to present that to the commission in the next sixty days. Uh, no issues with building, training. EMS collections here to date were two thousand and ninety-four. EMS collections here to date one-hundred-and-ninety-three thousand six hundred dollars and eighty-seven cents. For their budget for twenty-twenty-three, the first four months, they were at thirty-four percent, which is basically where they need to be. The first annual Junior Firefighters' Camp Day, we already have about twenty-five youth signed up, fourteen to eighteen years old. Inspector Walker is taking care of that, so that announcement will be coming soon as to what date. The annual Safety Day, uh, in October, this will be the second year in a row they've done this. It'll be at Tilden Rogers Park, and that was a great success last year. The firefighter ball is expected to be sometime in November, December is their target date. Fire Department is establishing or creating a nonprofit organization. They already have their board put together. They've applied to the Internal Revenue Service for their EIN numbers, which they will probably have shortly. The training facility grand opening is being announced, expect to be in July. The new ladder truck, right in the specs. They did switch over to image trend software, which has been a tremendous time-saving for the firefighters, just in their normal day-to-day operations in the station, but it even pays great benefits while they're out in the field. So that's been a tremendous help for them. The updating the personnel manual and the standard operating guidelines, uh, spoke with the chief. He says that's probably two to three months out, but he'll be presenting those to the committee to bring toward the council. The next promotional ceremony will be June twenty-eighth. They do this twice a year, but everybody will make sure we let you know the, the time. They would love for you to attend, and that includes the fire department. Utility Department, uh, approved the minutes from the last meeting. The May Safety Report, there were ninety-nine days since the last recordable injury, ninety-nine days since the last lost time injury. There's only been one recordable injury for the year. Personnel update, General, uh, General Manager Ward Wimbush informed the commissioners that Engineer Peyton Smith had resigned. He had two weeks' notice, and his last day was June the ninth. The approval of the trimming package, which council approved today, the commission took care of. The Hudson Transformer Update, uh, General Manager Ward Wimbush personally gave an update on the installation process, and it's continued to run smoothly. The search committee, Commissioner Jerry Burns, who's the chairperson, reported that they will meet on June seventh at one to discuss the position specifications for the general manager. They have sent, sent that information to the mayor for his approval. I'm assuming everything's going okay with that.
Yeah.
And that concludes the utility report.
All right. Police had met?
Yes, sir. Police met. Unfortunately, I don't have that report in front of me, but we did. Uh, Officer Moes was there. He's just so articulate about bringing us pertinent information pertaining the, uh, police department. And we did, did have a guest there, Mr. Weest. He came with some complaints. Has he talked to you at any point in time? We told him we would have to, um, he would have to submit police reports, uh, estimates and all those-
Oh, you were talking about Mr. Wee, yeah, Mr. Wee. No, he hasn't spoken to me since I last talked to you.
Right. And once he did all of those things, the commission would look at it, and then we would refer to you, for you to give your opinion about what we should do.
Okay.
And I'll have a written report, when we do all of this at the beginning of the week.
Okay. They complete you? Okay. Um, Chamber, Airport?
The Chamber and Airport, uh, of course, most, they both met while we were at AML, AML over in Little Rock this last week. But I've got a follow-up from the Chamber. They met on the fourteenth of June, and they discussed, uh, community news, including the ASU Mid-South, new promise scholarships, uh, their CDL program, and their paramedic program starting this fall. Uh, Crittan County Leadership is now open for adults living or working in Crittan County. To apply, you have to go to the, uh, website, westmemphischamber.com, and, and pull down the application. Uh, the Chamber is currently helping economic development and the Utility Commission with recruitment efforts. And that concludes the, uh, Chamber report, and I have not gotten the follow-up from the Airport Commission. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Um, am I missing any committees who I met? Uh, Councilman Merritt?
We met yesterday. I'm not ready.
Okay. All right, well, I move from there. Um, yes, I did have a couple things that I did want to bring up. And, uh, Nick, well, no, you go ahead first, Tori.
So I sent out an email with the link to the shared drive with all the reports for the month. Um, it included outstanding debt, checks we've spent, um, there's the general ledger, there's fund balances, and then there's also sales tax. Southland A and P, that's what you will receive every month here on out, and it'll be on shared drive. Okay?
I'll have to give you my new email. My old one was hacked and is no longer activated. I sent it to just about everybody.
Okay, yes, ma'am. Make sure you did it before. Okay.
Thank you, Tori.
Hmm. The only one else saying anything before I start, uh, Nick, is that Facebook directly on me, because I definitely wanna inform many people, because like I said, the mayor and this council take unfair criticism. And I wanna be clear when I say it. State highways in the city of West Memphis, streets that belong to the state, is the service roads all on and off rims. Collins Boulevard, Missouri Street, Seventh Street, Ingram Boulevard, Dr. Marloot King. Those are state highways. They are not the city. I can't go in there and do anything to fix those. I was just on the phone, and Councilman Crum just heard me on the phone arguing with Arda about this Rich Road Bridge thing. Now, let me get this explained. Rich Road Bridge is not the city of West Memphis. So please lay off of myself, especially councilmen in War One and War Three. And I know all the councilmen may be taking the hit from that, but that is Arda. That is not the city of West Memphis. And I think that some people just get on there to say these things, just because they may not personally like me, and I'm, I'm cool with that. But I know it's a lot of people that look at our Facebook, that you wanna get information. I just wanna share this information with them, so that they would know. Now, on Missouri, starting the shopping way down to Broadway, and from Broadway down to Yarnell, that's all the way down the east end of Broadway, Arda, in two to three weeks, are getting ready to start to repave and stripe those streets, because it's their responsibility, and it's time for them to do it, and I'm glad that they are doing it. So some of our people may be a little inconvenienced, but a lot of people that have been calling, myself as well as Councilman Crum, saying, well, they cannot see on Missouri, there's the stripe, and rightfully so, because I rode through and seen that there's a lot of fading on that street. Those streets are about to get done. Now, you ask why they not doing the shopping way down to the interstate, it because that's part of the, um, the intersection where they doing the, the roundup. They really getting ready to start the roundabouts. That is why they not doing this. That's why they starting them shopping way, instead of in front of that Exxon gas station, on back to Broadway and Broadway down east, as well as they gonna do is another section of Broadway as well on the west side. So Broadway and, serve, Broadway, I'm sorry, in Missouri is getting ready to start to be repaved in certain areas and re-stripped all the way down the street. So you all want to have that information, and you know that. Um, our sanitation department have, we have Monday, all of our drivers, we have, we have four drivers and the front-end loaders. I know we had some questions that wanted council, Councilman Hope talked to me about that. But under Ms. Robert, we have all the drivers, so any slacks that we may have had picking up some trash, that shouldn't be our issue anymore. Uh, our sanitation department on the residential side is doing what they do. But I need everyone to understand, cleaning West Memphis is not gonna be only on this council and the workers of the city. Get out and clean your own yards and in the front of your own houses. Get out and cut your own yard. That's not our responsibility. Everyone's saying, well, yards are overgrown. The property, the property belongs to the property owner, not the city of West Memphis. Think about this. As much yard as we go cut, if we keep cutting everybody yard, we can't cut what we supposed to get cut. So I'm asking that you all step up and make sure you cut your own yards. The properties that you own, you cut your own yard. It's not the city's responsibility. I'm gonna say it again. It's not the city's responsibility. We would do everything that we can to help if we in that situation, because we wanna make sure our citizens happy and our city is clean and looking presentable. But if the citizen gotta help us get this done, I, I have no other way I can say it. Please, we need you all's help. If you look down Broadway, I'm proud of the way that Broadway is looking. The owners of those buildings, as well as the city, especially Grass Department, uh, Code Enforcement, they have done a great job of getting things taken care of. Now, for the people saying that we, I won't enforce codes, that's the craziest thing in the world. All the U. A. Council people come here to Public Works and sit right there in front of George and say he is doing a wonderful job. But then sometime our own citizens get up there and say, well, why are we not enforcing law? And that's not true. We are, but think about it. Look what laws we enforcing. We having to enforce the laws against some of them. If they do what they supposed to do, we wouldn't have to be out there doing it.
From May, Mayor, there was a great article in the paper this past Wednesday, uh, talking about what you just talked about.
Yeah.
And Donald Wilder did a good job of writing that up. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's not the city's responsibility, as we say, but, but, you know, if somebody has a problem cutting a yard, I put on my Facebook, let me know, and I'll, I'll see if I can help get their yard cut.
Mm-hmm. And then, we had another article that ran in the police, in the, in the, in the newspaper about our crime down in the city, twenty-two percent. And you had this same group of people agonizers that come to our page and said that our city is not safe. Since I've been mayor, here in the city of West Memphis, compared to the last four years that I wasn't mayor, by fact, the paper was shown by LBI numbers, West Memphis is safer than it have ever been. The only difference now that you got Facebook. When a shot happened somewhere across town, everyone get on Facebook and say, how'd you hear the shot? Well, one of the guys that's complaining live right down the street from me, and I've been living up for two and a half years, and me, I have never walked outside of my yard and seen a police or ambulance on that street. So how, how has he seen so much crime? How, 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 have he ever went into the areas to try to volunteer and see what's going on? No, he hasn't. But every time it come about crime in West Memphis, it's something he done. What I'm gonna do, I have told them, and I mean this from my heart, you're not gonna keep disrespecting the men and women who protect us. Because you can say what they ain't doing, but if you being shot at or robbed, guess who you gonna call? You call no man and woman right out there. So show them some respect, because they ain't got to put their lives on the line and help you, because they have to protect their own, their own self. So please, let, let's show more respect to them. And this thing is not about, um, who doing this and who doing what. Our city is in a better position. So I just want everyone to understand that. And if something does happen, it's not the whole police department fault. I explain this to young people all the time. If you have one incident with an officer, you can't blanket that on the whole police department? So I, I want, I'm asking council and the citizens to echo what we are saying. West Memphis is safer, it's cleaner. Do we got a long way to go? Yes, ma'am. We got a long way to go. Mr. Mohammed and Councilman Crum, you all doing to keep West Memphis beautiful this weekend. If you talk about it dirty, get out there. I wanna see you all out there with them. Help them get this thing cleaned up. Support what they are doing. Instead of Facebook all the time, when you the had all the issues that I can pull up on a certain person, but I went stoop to that level. Start helping out, start being part of the solution, instead of being an echo of the problem. Um, now, some good news. I'm happy to announce, uh, I'm happy to announce that, uh, thanks to our good friend in, uh, Southland Casino, they have agreed, and we are working out the terms now, to build us a- to build us a brand-new animal shelter control system here in the city of West Memphis. So we working out the terms right now, get some things together, but they have committed to, they asked for one thing, which is going to take the council's support. They want to name the Nessie Crest Animal Control Shelter. If they going to pay for it, I think we don't have no problem with naming Nessie Crest.
Ness is a good guy.
Yeah, he a real good guy, so I think we can do that. Also, like I said, I want us to keep Councilwoman Hutchinson, Ms. Hutchinson, as well as Ms. Davis and anyone who may have lost a loved one in your prayers. Also, I'm happy to announce tonight that tonight at Southland Casino, since we talked about them, they were chosen to host the Memphis Grizzlies Draft Party. So I'll be there tonight with a bunch of the Memphis Grizzlies players. So I know some of you all may not go there, but if you do, come by and see the Memphis Grizzlies. They have chose West Memphis out of all the places they could have been in Memphis. They right here in West Memphis tonight. So that mean we doing a great thing. Make sure I haven't forgotten anything.
Is there anything you touched on about the pork prize? Or is that still just too early to say?
Let me, let me get a picture. Let me, let me get it. But we, I got, I got a list right here, 11 things that we going to get done by the end of the year. And, I mean, this first one, that's that raise grant, I'm really happy about that. Couple other things, the parth and, it's a thing I just can't say right now, but I'm marking the mark on the mark, Nessie Crest Animal Shelter, that's something we're going to get there. We've got a lot of great things going on. I do want to say this too, and I think I can announce this. Ms. Felix, well, right now, we have a new industry coming back to West Memphis that's going to bring 300 to 500 new jobs back to the city of West Memphis. And I can make the announcement, as she will be able to. Family Dollar Distribution is on its way back. I'm so happy about that. Three to 500 new jobs. And we thought they were going to change it to Dollar Tree or something other, but they believe that West Memphis is great for Family Dollar, and they going to bring it back and going to do some other things to clear out the reputation that they may have went through and with the other things. So, but we going to make that happen, so.
Federal Highway 4. Are you going to throw that up there?
At the next meeting. I know it's a big one, though.
We have an ETA on when they may be back.
Well, actually, they say they getting ready to start the renovation, what they doing if new water systems in there, throw some other stuff inside of it. But then I think they're going to take with a Malo conveyor out. Yeah, so they're going to do some of that, but definitely, there going to be 300 to 500 new jobs for the people of West Memphis.
Mayor McClain, did Mr. Parker, Lorenzo Parker, get my opportunity to say anything?
Yeah, he talked, but you want-
He did speak. If he's spoken already, that's fine. I was a little late.
So there's a lot of good things that going on in the city. I have one citizen request, Jessica Burns, when you come forward, please, give your name, your address, five minutes, please.
My name is Jessica Burns, and I'm a citizen of West Memphis. I'm not going to give my address, because I don't want it broadcasted. I want to start by saying that I've lived in Crittenden County my entire life, minus three years. My husband was stationed in the military, and we, we were out of town at that time. I've never wanted to pack up and move my children and my husband away from here until now. And this has been an ongoing situation, probably for almost eight months now. But I can't. My husband, he, his family's business is here, and we can't move. It just is what it is. There's an issue that I'm wanting to address with the West Memphis Police Department. There was a criminal investigation detective-
Hold, hold, hold. We can't get into-
I'm not going to give any names. I won't give any names. And I mean, I won't do any names. There was a criminal investigation detective who was on maternity leave that was allowed to call into the department and run my vehicle for no reason. She had no reason at all. She lied when she was interviewed by ACIC. She lied when she was interviewed by people in the department on more than one occasion with the incident and with everything that was going on. In Section 3 of ACIC Statute ACA 1212, 2112, and 1212, 1002B, this is a felony.
I'm going to stop you. And the reason I'm going to is because I have provided you your information with the FOI request, and I think you're getting into too many details, which could lead to it being a personnel matter, which we don't discuss unless we're in executive session. The ACIC situation is not under our control. That's something that's decided by somebody else.
You're right.
The West Memphis Police Department has taken action as a result of what you're talking about. There was an investigation that was done. You were provided the complete investigation, and we just don't need to get into identifying by, you know, giving specifics, which is another way to identify somebody, okay? So if you could avoid giving specifics, it might not identify this person that you're trying not to identify.
So, okay, so the detective, okay, you'll just have to stop me then, okay?
I might do that.
That's fine. The detective was investigated on two counts of truthfulness and one count of personal misconduct. The only reward that she was given was well date.
I'm going to stop you again. You're getting too specific about the investigation, which would lead somebody to possibly figure out who you're talking about. And that's not your intent, is what you said when you came up here.
And I would like to say this, instead of saying, and I mean, you've already started, but you could say the officer instead of-
She, I apologize for that.
Yes.
Okay.
Is, is it something you want after?
Yes, sir, there is. There is something I want, and I don't even know if you guys can help me at this point, because I keep getting stopped, so.
Well, let me say this too as well. I think it would probably be better, and I'm not sure if I'm right or not, but at least meet with the mayor.
I tried to meet with the mayor. I tried. I actually had a meeting with him, and Nick Coulter texted me and told me that I could not meet with him.
Well, it's not, it's not the mayor's job. And the job has been done under the investigation through the police department. You know, as long as the policy is followed, then-
But it wasn't followed.
Well, ma'am, again, you're trying to identify this person without saying their name by giving specifics, and we can't do that in this type of meeting, okay? I mean, there are rights that this person has from a personnel standpoint that we have to protect as the city, and I'm the one who has to protect those, okay? As the city attorney. I'm not trying to stop you from telling what you want to say, but I also have to take into consideration that you're talking about personnel issues of an employee of the city, okay? So if you can't-
So what about other people in the city?
If you have to be, if you have to be specific about it, then you don't need to say it, okay? If it's specific information about the investigation, you really don't need to talk about that in a public forum, okay? Not in this forum, anyway.
May I ask you a question? You came, of course, you, I really do feel your sincerity and you're hurt. But what I want to know from you is this, exactly what are you asking council to do without saying names or specifications?
To hold the department accountable. I don't feel what was done to this individual was, was justice.
You don't think it was enough?
I don't. I don't think it was enough.
So, of course, you've been harmed and your family has been harmed because of this officer's action. Is that what you're saying?
I'm not necessarily saying I was harmed because I wasn't physically harmed. Yes, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Well, let me say this. I'm here today. Wants to meet, know if you want to sit down and talk to me, you can have that conversation with me. I'll be listening to you. You don't have to worry about no one saying you can't meet with me. If you choose.
I don't feel comfortable meeting without it being, without it being public. No. If we can meet with somebody else besides you and somebody else, then yeah, that's fine.
I have told you, if you want to have someone else, they ain't not going to make a difference in this situation, but if you feel-
Apparently, you're not going to make a difference either.
All right, well, respectfully, I gave you an option and you refused it, so thank you for coming. Also, I think we got one more issue, just to get an update. Ms. Felix, did she want to talk? I think, yeah.
They're here, they're just sitting in, but they did report pictures of what they're doing. This is the couple, the 224 beds that was on demolition, and we giving them-
Hold, hold. Hold, Ms. Felix. Can I get a motion in a second to add Ms. Felix to the agenda real quick?
So, Maude-
Your employee just provided an updated report on what we were discussing. Wouldn't you and me be in? I think it's good. But I want you to-
Yeah, okay. Come, come forward, Ms. Felix.
Yes, we have requested that they give us updates on the progress that they're making at 224 Bettis. And it's like night and day. They are working to get this property rehabbed. They've done quite a bit of exterior work. It's not an eyesore in the community anymore. They've cleaned up, they've cut trees, they've done some landscaping and painting, and they have made a difference. So I can say they are pushing forward, trying to get this property up to code.
And I would like to also add, I'm up and down the street all of the time, and I see them out there working, so I can, I can testify for them. They're really working. They got lines up to some of the windows. Things look pretty good.
Yes. They're doing the work themselves. We have made a suggestion that the inspectors come out to kind of give them a punch list of what all would need to be done to bring it up to code, to make sure that they are in compliance, that this, this property will be safe for rental or selling, whatever they want to do. We just want to make sure that it's up to code. And they've agreed.
So how much more time will we give in them this indefinite list?
They're going to give us a timeline. We've requested that also. So I should have that for the next meeting.
So, Ms. Felix, you feel comfortable that they're going to get to what they-
It's like night and day. It's a different, it totally looks different.
That's good. They kept their word.
They did.
Now, we got to keep ours.
Yeah.
All right. Well, that's all I had. Didn't want to counsel-
I got two things that kind of tag on to what you had already talked about, but I spoke to Don Wilburn because, you know, the Fourth of July is coming up. The fireworks ordinance is still laying there. So I had to ask him to do an article on the fireworks times and, you know, just to remind people about this, because it's going to come, you know, it always becomes a hot topic around the holidays. And the cleanup, I was going to see if Counselor Mohammed wanted to say something about our cleanup this Saturday, because we've got dumpsters designated, and it's a county project, so, Ms. Mohammed, I'll just turn it to you.
Yes, sir. Thank you so very much, Alderman Croon. We are having a cleanup this Saturday. We are going to be meeting at the Civic Center at eight, eight o'clock. Registration starts from eight to eight thirty. We'll be meeting there, and I've had a few snazzy t-shirts made, because we didn't get a chance to go through our regular avenue. The t-shirts quantity is limited, so it's going to be first come, first served. And we're just going to ask people to come, and if you don't have a designated area to clean, we'll have assignments for you. And whenever you get done with your assignment, you're welcome to just leave and go home. It's from eight to twelve, but if you're done before twelve, then you'll just, you're welcome to go home. So we're looking forward to people coming out. We're talking about cleaning up our city. Houses are being torn down. I got text messages this morning, people praising the city for tearing down a lot of old, dilapidated homes, and I can see a difference in that. So we're all working together, trying to revise and rejuvenate and renew our neighborhoods and our city. People around the corner from me, they bought an old house. They're working on it diligently, trying to make it look as it should look. So we don't want people moving away with new jobs coming in. We want people moving in. And of course, anyone wants to come to something that's attractive and pleasing to look at. So please come out and support us Saturday morning. Keep West Memphis beautiful.
Thank you. Mayor, can I just follow up with our manufactured housing? Went through the class. I'll be emailing everybody to pack it tomorrow. You'll get a singleizer out. That's not even part of the conversation when it comes to, are they actually able to lend against? So, but it's, it deals in the manufacturing, it deals into other type of housing. Lot of resources in there that we might be able to reach out to to help you develop the plan that you're wanting to go forward with, but I will email everybody tomorrow and you can read through it.
And I would like to thank Officer Moes Walker. He's, he's such an articulate police officer. He's always there to answer any questions. He answered them in such a manner that keeps from offending anyone, police officers, citizens, or just whomever. And he's at the police commission meetings, and I would really like to commend him on what a wonderful job he does, and I just love his voice.
Also, I want to make the announcement, Friday, June 30th, this Friday, June 30th, we will have a Freedom Fest at Tilden Rogers Park. I want to invite everyone out this Friday, the 30th, at Tilden Rogers Park. I'm sorry, next Friday, not this Friday, next Friday, at Tilden Rogers Park, we will have a Freedom Fest, so everyone come on out and enjoy themselves. Nick, what time is it?
Miss Elton's going to be singing, too.
Yeah, it's going to start at six, six o'clock. And Miss Elton will be one of the guest singers, so please come out and, and hear her. She actually works for us. She has a beautiful voice. But next Friday, the 30th, at six o'clock. Bring your shade and your cheers. We don't have anything else? Anyone else have anything?
Lou, we return.
On the bar?
Aye.
A bowl? All right, we're done.